All right, let's call this meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic the which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get a motion to allow Adam to join the adjutant? Any seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, Adam. All right, approval of the August 5th, 2025 minutes. Everyone had a chance to take a look at those?
Yes.
Questions, any concerns, any changes? Seeing none, can I have the motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
They are approved. We have one agenda item today, which is discussing the D.O.T.S. amendment to amend commercial lighting standards. Over to Robert.
Good evening, Chairman Wardman, Chairman of the planning board. This is another part of the lighting ordinance that we're attempting to address. The reason why tonight is discussion, we talked last week. This is a little bit bigger section than the last section that we tackled. So, coming out of the, coming out of the ad hoc committee, we had some discussions that also needed to go through the planning board, obviously, to get some input there to see what different folks wanted input on, to make some input on this. So, we're forwarding this draft text amendment that targets light for commercial. It says, I'm sorry, I made a mistake on the memo there, it's in private docs and peers, but that's for commercial. The reason it says that is because it actually goes hand in hand with the commercial docs and peers, which was a standard that we tackled last time. And this goes into commercial, but it was hard to separate those two sections to where it made sense, which is why the purpose of the memo includes docs and peers, even though technically it was handled last planning board meeting. But what this does specifically is it addresses parking lots, driveways and commercials settings, C1 through 5. It also applies to G1 and private clubs. Those are all considered commercial uses. The G1 is going to be what's owned by the town typically. Like this campus is located in a G1. A couple of our hump houses will have a little carve out for G1 and private clubs, you know, are all over the place. But then the C5 is being across the bridge, obviously. One is over here, I think, and then most, you know, 3, 4 and 5 are spread out. But anyway, you're familiar with that. So, this also limits up to 700 lumens with all those shut off within 10 minutes. We talked about that last time. But it goes, but this specifically applies to commercial. And what you'll find is when we finally bring the residential text amendment in is, what the ad hoc committee tried to do was eliminate the redundancy between commercial and residential, because there's a lot of overlap where you just feel like you're repeating yourself. And the ad hoc committee eliminated a lot of that, but the end result looked like a dramatic change. So, I was asked to just adjust the existing ordinance with the new language. And so, you will see this again in the residential section. You know, specifically with pole height restrictions, flood sensors and the timing of deactivation after deactivation, which we're still on the first part of the memo. Landscaping and decorative lighting, commercial building exteriors, holiday lighting, which was also addressed last time. The vertical illumination limit of three average foot candles, gas stations, convenience store canopies, which is only one that we have now. I think they've all come down except for the one across the bridge, which is the Scotsman, Scotsman, I don't know how to pronounce it. The one gas station, which is actually ours. It is.
Maybe it's ours.
I had no idea. It was apparently. I drove by, I saw a bunch of yard signs. Somebody asked me to take it down and then I was like, oh yeah, I guess that is ours, after I looked at the zoning map. So, yeah, I had to ask them to take their yard signs down one day. This, this goes for a, this implements sort of a clear understanding for the uniformity ratio, which is the table at the end of the ordinance, but that's not important because we're chopping this thing up. You'll see the uniformity ratio at a later date. This essentially gives you a, an average of light underneath the canopy and cuts off the lighting at the 90 degree angle for full cutoff light fixtures, which is consistent throughout our lighting ordinance. It also adds for commercial a lighting review. So, if someone is redeveloping commercial or they're making significant changes to a lighting plan or landscaping, then they would need to submit a lighting plan, which would give you a photometric plan essentially, so that we could look at the average light that is projected to be cast from the fixtures. And I don't expect that we will see a photometric plan in residential, but in commercial, I think everybody felt like it was a good idea. So, outdoor sports fields, just had a brief conversation about that. I'm gonna skip over that for now, we'll come back to it, I'm sure. So, in the strike through underline, which is the clearest example of what it changes, basically, it says to control glare, it removes excessive, control all glare, not just excessive glare, because that is difficult to enforce. Must to shall for consistency and reduce the, we're in the strike through underline, if anybody was looking. Under A subsection C, you can see the law is, it reduces the height of poles from 30 feet to 18 feet, measured from the base of the pole or 10 feet from above the first finish core elevation for pile supported structures. And that's mostly important for residential, but it also applies to commercial.
Robert, can you just point out where that was?
Yes, sir. So, we're in the strike through underline version. And it's under one C, so general under C. It's where the first big block, blue block is. So, what you'll see is the, it goes directly into your flood or spot luminaires, which will be included in, when I actually bring the text amendment, because this is for discussion, I'll have the full list of new definitions. I didn't include that in this because it was just a lot more for us to focus on. We need to focus on the ordinance, but the definitions are pretty straightforward. A luminaire is just a fixture, it's just a lighting fixture. So, essentially, it just goes from the flood or spotlight luminaires of 700 lumens or less controlled by motion sensors set to extinguish within 10 minutes after the lighting activation. We go into landscape and decorative lighting. Fixtures are not to exceed 300 lumens, must be aimed to shield and prevent uplighting and trespass, which are all new sections. So, this goes into our theme of avoiding glare on public radways and seeing bare light sources, which is actually still existing in our current ordinance, but the wording is a little bit different to make it more clear for understanding. It also lays out the way that you would measure the uniformity, which is essentially to take the luminescent meters at waist height and go for a 10-foot grid essentially, and then take an average of how much light is being produced and needs to be below that. Anyone who has a professional lighting plan as far as commercial is concerned will already have that in the software. I would need to go out there and do it manually. Some people may not want to pay for that sort of plan and need to make adjustments accordingly. So, going on to the next section, nothing changes until we get down to subsection D under commercial buildings, exteriors and parking garages.
That would be section B.
It is. Yeah, it's on the next page. It's under.
Commercial building exteriors and parking garages?
Yes, sir. So, you got one, two, special design areas, we left that in there. Three, standard. Then the commercial buildings and exteriors and parking garages. So, this is just language that has changed light fixtures made to luminaires shall, just for consistency through the rewrite of the ordinance. That doesn't change, but it will, but it does change for no higher than, we moved it from 20 feet to 10 feet above grade. That, that is the wall mounted. And the only time that that changes is if it's on the, let's see. Changes back.
To the level.
The maximum, yeah, that's the ground level lighting. And then the mounted or pole mounted lights are the ones that do 10 feet or 10 feet above the first floor. So, you've got, moving down, we do get back into the string and decorative lights and tapes and should be neon, not neo. Unshielded light sources, bare or filament visible lamps, decorative string or tape lights, neon fluorescent, high intensity discharge, HID, which is, that's the high intensity discharge, or similar unsealed sources used to outline property. The reason why that is a, is a new underlying section is because these are, these are new lighting fixtures that basically didn't exist when our original ordinance was adopted. So, we just added those in so that there was no confusion about what was being regulated as far as that's concerned. So, you go down, the seasonal holiday, still exempt between the Monday, let's see.
Do you, are we gonna, do we need to make that consistent with residential or?
Yeah, we, we should. We should.
I think we said the Monday before Thanksgiving.
Monday before Thanksgiving.
Was it Jim 10th, was that what it was?
That's why they had October, like Halloween or something.
It was Halloween.
Yes. And then until January 10th. 10th, I think that's what we put for the docs and peers. I'll go back and double check and make sure it lives the same as the docs and peers, just for consistency.
I mean, from a practical standpoint, do we want to include Halloween?
I think that's what the ad hoc committee put that in.
Because we're trying to make it consistent with commercial and residential. Obviously, I think commercial is more Halloween.
No, always put in Halloween.
My dad had a Halloween tree.
Kitty's a rebel.
I have a Halloween tree.
It's just because my dad didn't want to take the tree down, but.
So, if we're gonna include Halloween, what should the date be? Because.
Well, if you included Halloween, then we originally said October 15th and January 15th was the original window.
So, what do we do about? So, what do we do about residential? That's the question, do we make, do we keep residential the same?
I think that we would keep it the same as this for, if we're including Halloween specifically for, you know, commercial and consistency sake, then you would want to include it in the residential.
Is there much Halloween lighting other than Mickey?
No, and I don't think this is just, I don't think we have to make commercial and residential the same. I think they're.
Right, yeah.
Stuff different. I mean, from a practical standpoint, as you said, residential, there's not a lot of light. So, maybe, maybe we do differentiate a lot.
Harbor Island has a lot of.
Got a lot of Halloween.
I agree.
Trick or treating and all, yeah.
Harbor Island has a lot of decorating. I would go with David's recommendation, make them the same.
And all I'm saying is, we've, the last two meetings, we had discussions about limiting the lighting.
Right. Just to open it up for another.
We're doing the exact same thing. We're back, you know, now one-sixth of the year, you basically can put string lights and blinking lights up. So.
People in Harbor Island don't start decorating for Halloween until like maximum three or four days beforehand.
But if you're allowing, if you're opening up the possibility for you to be able to do that, then you're almost, again, it's for discussion, you're almost defeating the purpose of trying to regulate.
I also have 4th of July lights at my house.
Well, let's just.
Just leak a lot of fireworks.
Fireworks and all that stuff.
I could get Easter points today.
Just, I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna talk about coming up with a lighting plan that is consistent with, you know, I think what that had was tasked with, to keep it kind of a low lighting area. Allowing multi-purpose lights and string lights two months out of the year doesn't necessarily seem to fit with what the purpose of it really wants.
And Halloween's only for a few days. And when Thanksgiving just goes on, bad for council but.
And all the, and all the.
I can adjust it however you like. Harvest lights get three days and then, yeah, switch over there.
Good luck. Then Neil will come to your house and switch over, how about that?
I mean, I can definitely see both perspectives, obviously.
I don't have a problem, but it's for discussion.
Sure.
But you can't, I mean, you can't say we're trying to get this really tough new lighting ordinance and then.
I don't think the goal was to be tough.
Well, I think it's to attempt to restrict the light pollution allowed.
Right.
I mean, the discussion in the ad hoc about peers and docs was that had to get under control and to allow, not to allow.
Oh, this is more than peers and docs.
Yeah, not to allow holiday lighting on the docs. Even a couple of years ago, it was because COVID, they said, well, you can light up your docs.
We're allowing lights on docs from.
What was the November day?
Monday before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, Monday before Thanksgiving to January 10th.
That's not written on here, is it?
No, because.
Using the O one.
It's funny because that date, that date range actually spreads between, I didn't realize it until I sent the packet out, but that date range is actually stated in like three different parts of the ordinance. It's on docs and peers, it's in commercial, it's in residential, which is why we tried to rewrite the whole thing. But I, yeah, I'll make it consistent for the, for the next one, so I'll check that off.
Well, what are we gonna make it consistent with?
The Monday.
Monday for Thanksgiving.
I, I'll put it out anyway, nobody's gonna say anything. My maid never has called me and asked me to cut my porch light off.
Carrot lights are not.
I'm teasing, we don't.
I'm fine with that suggestion, but like Kitty said, it's not, that's not a big problem with Halloween, it's not a big problem.
I'm the only one in my home.
No, and again, it's, we're a self-reported town, so regardless of what happens on Harbor Island on Halloween, I don't think, I hope that people aren't gonna start calling Robert two days before.
I don't think anybody would complain.
I have never, I mean, I've been here six years, I've never once gotten a complaint about a Halloween light.
So, let's write it like, let's write it consistent with the Monday before Thanksgiving through January 10th? And then, let's just write it that way.
And if they plus that, yeah, just cut them off.
There you go.
And then turn them on the last day.
Well, you could, you could give a very clear guidance around Halloween, but I don't know if we want to single that.
No, just.
I think that you don't.
I think you get to a problem.
Because like I say, I did mine on the 4th of July. But only one day, packs were free, day before the day ended, they out.
Yeah, I think we ought to keep it tightened up like that and just get Halloween clock.
Sounds good.
That's my opinion.
So, the lighting fixture, the next section, which is under gas station, convenience store canopies, that doesn't change. The 200 watts to 15 foot candles, those are equivalents. The reason why it went from watts to foot candles is because you don't measure light by wattage anymore. So, it's, it's sort of something that, I mean, if you had a, if you had a 200 watt LED, you would pull a hole for your house, I think. So, then, commercial docs and peers, just change that from restrict to eliminate, must to shall, control to produce now. You see, this is just, this are just consistent language changes. The original lighting ordinance was probably done piecemeal, which is why it probably looks like it is. So, that's what, kind of what we're dealing with going back. So, mounting height, as low as practical, but in no case shall the fixture be mounted higher than 25 feet to the minimum necessary to task visibility, shall not exceed 15 feet above the lowest platform of the dock or pier. That was an answer, that was an answer to our commercial peers. Remember, I, we were talking about peers and docs last week. Well, this section might, should have been in that section, but it's in the commercial use, so it ended up in this section. So, the, the, the goal here was to say, if the pier rises above, you know, a certain number of sea level, then you can't have it a certain height above the attached mainland, which is what the pier and dock section says. This section essentially says that on a pier, that it can be no more than 15 feet above the deck of the pier. So, that solves the problem of, well, what height are we going by? Where it's connected at the mainland or from the pier to the top of the light? And that's why this section is not in the section that you looked at last one. So, I hope that was clear, but I really don't feel like it was clear.
No, I think that's better because, you know, with the tides changing too, and that can.
I understand that it's a little bit of a test, but again, the location of it. How does it tie in with geo-septic matter here?
Well, again, I think that our original ordinance, which is what this was taken from, was probably done piecemeal and tacked on at some point when someone realized that a commercial pier over the ocean is a different animal than a private pier or, or a marina pier over in the estuary. And so, what ends up happening is that one is basically static and that one moves. So, it's like two completely, I mean, same purpose, same use, two completely different situations. And I think that this one might have actually been first, and then the pier and dock section was tacked on later. If you read these old ordinances, you can, you can start identifying where people just started sticking stuff in. And that was sort of our goal, was to try to clean all that up, but.
You know, when we drew it out.
Exactly, yeah. So, we, we basically, in the ad hoc committee, we basically took the entire ordinance and we dissected it and said, what sections should go where? And it made more sense, but it was scary because when you do that, then you've basically rewritten everything right down to the punctuation. You've, you've essentially built it from the ground up and that looks like a more significant change than it probably was, but, you know.
Hopefully, when we compared the two.
Yeah, exactly.
We had pound for pound.
Yeah, it was pretty much the same. I mean, some, some changes, but. So, there's a new section under the bare light sources, except as allowed in subsection A3 for holiday periods. Once again, that holiday period is, yeah.
Are you gonna change that to just say holiday period singular?
Well, it goes from section A3, it, yeah, holiday period, yeah, that's a good point.
Well, it's Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Yeah, but it's.
But it's one period of time.
Black Friday too.
Black Friday.
So, then the next one goes into the lighting review. So, that's the exterior lighting shall be reviewed by the zoning administrator prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy. Commercial parking lots require a photometric plan, meeting though, 15598B6C, which is a section that is added in there that basically just describes what a photometric plan is. And it's, it's pretty, our version of a photometric plan is pretty rudimentary. It's nothing major, it's just basically me or staff, might not be me someday, just staff being able to check, be like, okay, it is theoretically below the threshold for your uniformity ratio, and it does not look like on this plan that lights are aimed at the neighbors and shining across, you know, the waterway. That's really what's at issue here.
But David, may I ask a question? I think that's in the wrong place. Shouldn't lighting review be separated and at the very beginning of this section? It's just kind of buried and.
Yeah, it could be.
That's just my suggestion.
I agree, I think that, yeah. It's more definition section.
Do you want to put it in the general section? Move it to the very front of the commercial exterior lighting?
I think that's where.
Yeah, I think that's great, yeah.
So, we can do that.
Robert, I don't, I recall we had that table and we tightened up, so through the ad hoc and the work with the external consultant, we tightened up what the, had a measure, the foot candles, et cetera.
Yes.
Does our current ordinance say with regard to?
It doesn't say anything about how we're supposed to measure it. So, there's the table and it doesn't really tell you how to do anything, which is, it just says you should be below X amount of average foot candles. And what this does, this version of the ordinance basically says how we measure it, which is to.
It's too ambiguous, is that right?
Yeah, it was too ambiguous. It was sort of like, you should be under this amount. Well, if I'm standing on that end and I'm getting no light and I'm standing under this light bulb and I'm getting 500 lumens, and the difference between that and that is probably under, you know, when this is a distraction and a safety hazard for everybody around it. So, the, the uniformity ratio basically says that it's a 10-foot grid essentially, and then an average of those points where we measure the light. So, it explains how we do it, instead of just saying it's an average and then not really tell you what it's an average of, so.
All right, so the next one's gonna be the sports lights. I've heard from you and Jim, so. Let's let them talk through, but y'all were with the lighting committee, what was the discussion about? I'm a lighting committee and then we'll have this discussion.
And Robert's gonna have to help refresh our memory, but I found an email that Neil sent us. And his email in purpose title was Last Minute Loose Ends. And we talked about page 40, sports fields. Should we consider broadening this to public parks and playgrounds, also elements restrict this other than pole height? But I don't think the ad hoc committee ever decided on a pole height.
We knew it was an issue, but we didn't address it. But I recall Katie coming into one of our meetings and.
She came into one of our meetings, yeah.
She said, you know, are we gonna be okay with lighting for the courts? And we said, well, you know, we'll consider it, we'll consider what it is, but we never dealt with any details on the table.
Right.
So, at that time, I think it was a 30-foot in the, in the existing ordinance.
Yeah, and my concern is, A, this is written, and may I ask Robert how you came up with the 65? Because I don't remember discussing 65.
We did discuss it.
If I can say something, Katie did bring in something from day one, the lights on the sports bill are at 65 feet.
Great, to us?
Well, to somebody, I mean, her plan.
We talked about it in the ad hoc.
Yeah, 65 feet has always been out there.
Why 65?
That's what was recommended, I think, by the professional company for those lights.
Well, for recreation residential courts or backyard and park courts, they typically range from 20 to 26 feet, huge difference. they typically range from 20 to 26 feet, huge difference.
Well, I think there's a lot of, there's other things that are considered.
That gives you, this height provides adequate illumination while minimizing light spill to neighboring areas.
And then there's the wrong pickle.
Something I had to do.
Courts versus the tennis, the tennis and...
I've got photographs of that, it's bad.
So I guess one of the issues is we're getting complaints, the town's getting complaints. I, I saw them.
I'm getting, I'm getting complaints.
I saw them for the first time one night this weekend, because I, I never look out my front window. So I was coming down Causeway, coming toward, to the west, and they look absolutely terrible. But I guess for the discussion purposes here, my thought is, why would we approve something 65 feet when we won't even approve a building of 40 feet is the maximum, so.
Some buildings can be over 40 feet, but...
Some what?
Some buildings can, in commercial districts, can be over 40 feet.
Right, but when you put something up...
Consistently, we're a lot lower on everything else, and then, you have this...
When you put something up over 40 feet, it's gonna be shining in people's windows? And what if, I was thinking about this when I read it. What if a group comes along and they want to light a soccer court out here, soccer field out here? I think, I guess my recommendation is we ought to take it down to what the industry standards say. And what I looked up, pretty much the same as Margaret found, 20 to 26 is fine for recreational and residential courts. For commercial courts, the height only goes to 39. And professional tennis stadiums, which we did not have, 50 to 66 feet. So my recommendation would be...
Stadium level, you've got people above the lights if that's the case, but that's why it would be higher.
Right, right.
Well, it's definitely overkill for a neighborhood park.
Yeah.
But I, I, I don't, I don't remember in any way, and I don't think we can see in any of the documents that ad hoc could put forward, you know, into the system, so to speak. We finished it up, that there was ever a 65 foot.
It was specifically there because Katie said that the...
But it doesn't meet the criteria that we established in the ad hoc now. That's only one data point, okay? The ad hoc is just one data point. But for me, the 65 came out of nowhere.
Well, the 65 was specifically to meet the, to meet the standard of the, of the tennis courts. That was the discussion that we had in the ad hoc committee.
But that's not, that's not a standard for tennis courts.
Well, it is, it is a standard.
That was the plan that was all...
65 is...
The plan was all to the ad hoc committee.
Margaret, these aren't recreational courts, first of all, this isn't a back...
They're recreational.
This isn't a backdoor tennis court, this is...
No, it's recreational and residential courts.
And that's not what you're talking about.
Okay, then the next one, if you go to commercial, it only goes 26 to 39.
All right, here's the, here's the deal. The fact of the matter is, the town has already approved those 65 foot light poles and they're up. I don't believe it's our job to, if the Board of Aldermen want to address that, then we're the welcome to address those light poles. But they've been approved and they're up.
It was, she, she discussed it, that we talked about it.
Was there a paper trail showing where, how it got to be 65? Were there emails or is your...
I, I had nothing to do with the plans of the...
Pickleball.
Of the tennis and pickleball courts.
And pickleball even needs a lower, because they don't do lobbying and all that kind of stuff.
Well, David, if I may say, I think my rec, I would like the committee to recommend any future...
Absolutely, 100%.
Go to 40, and the issue about the too tall lights, that's kind of an opinion, but the existing lights, that's a different...
I think they're too, I think they're too tall.
That's a different discussion.
The problem is, is at this point, now that it's been approved and they've been built, we as a planning board don't have much authority to reduce those.
Exactly, yeah.
I mean, you can always take your recommendation.
We can't.
Oh, absolutely.
But, but what I think, Jim said that it's important. I absolutely think we should address the 65 foot height now, being that that is way too high. Now, again, I think that you're gonna have, you can't just look at light poles consistent with tennis courts, because there's a lot of other things that are going on, whether it be softball fields, whether it be soccer field, whether it be football field. All different types of lights. You need to come up with a height and I would say some sort of rationale of what type of height we want.
And my understanding of these particular lights, the reason that I was, well, also convinced that they were not going to be an issue was because they were supposed to be properly aimed so as to not be, not to create trespass and glare. And they, they shut off at, what, 10 o'clock?
I think that was set at 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock.
Yeah.
I've got photographs showing that there is a lot of light pollution all the way, I mean, way beyond what it should be. I mean, it lights up the, it's crazy what it's...
They put off at 10 o'clock? So it bothers you before 10 o'clock?
It's not me, I've had like four complaints from people on Coral and, yeah, over, over.
But their problem is that they don't like it before, on it off before 10 o'clock. They don't want to get bright up at 10 o'clock.
Looks like a starship coming in. I mean, it's, doesn't it, Jim?
It does, and I think to Robert's point, the nearby people, if there were nearby people, unfortunately, they aren't, there aren't any residential. But let's say you put lighting out here for a soccer field, those folks over there are not going to get light pollution because it's directed at the field. But the sky, and if these lights over here were only 35 or 40 feet, that would be fine. But I think these at 65, that's the issue that, like Tony said, that's a, that's a...
What about traffic? Is it bothering traffic?
I didn't notice it, I was a passenger when I first saw them coming down, I think I said Causeway earlier, when I was coming down Salisbury Street. Now, they just don't look. Like, like Margaret said, that does look like a spaceship.
It does, it's unbelievable.
And...
I'm telling you, she explained that to us. I can't exactly remember what, was related to price. They advised her to do that.
Right.
She had an answer for us.
And then she said, and they, and they said that it, it wouldn't be like that.
Yeah, it wouldn't be, I think she said it wouldn't be trespassing, didn't she?
Some, yeah, I know, so that makes me wonder if there's shields that can be installed on them to address the...
Maybe they can be adjusted.
Yeah, that's exactly, but that was, that was one of the deals.
Trade height.
Yeah, trade height for the number of poles.
Well, I mean, that makes sense. It makes sense, yeah, lower, lower poles you're gonna have to, I think, lower poles.
Versus the standard made to that present.
But she, there was a price reason that she did that. She told them.
Why, why can we, I mean, from a sports field perspective, why can we not say that?
Katie.
No, but you said told them.
We don't need any more sports field lighting, if that's an issue.
Well, the only sports fields that by definition are on tennis.
I mean, why, why, I mean, ultimately, the town, whether or not the town would be exempt from that anyway, that's something that...
Right. I mean, I, I think we were trying to, you know, not exempt the town, so.
Robert, if you apply the photometric standard, the footprint, on the new proposed way.
Right.
I guess you'll get a reading that'll say, it meets that criteria.
That's right.
But whether it's completely shielded or not is another criteria.
Right.
That's a good thing to ask about shields.
Yeah, and the problem is, if you have a 65 foot light and then you have a 20 foot porch.
And a 6 foot person.
And a 6 foot person, you're never gonna be able to shield that light because you're always gonna be looking up so high, you know? I mean, so I don't know, maybe there is something that, maybe there's something you can...
Could we solve this issue by putting something in here that any proposed lighting for outdoor sports fields in the municipal complex shall be, come before the planning board? Because what you said, like, let's say a soccer field may need particular lighting, and it won't be successful unless they get that lighting, and then it would be up to the planning board to pass that recommendation on to the Alderman, that that would be the approved lighting.
Any of the parks just not...
I, I like, I like that, except, I guess you all would have to, in terms of legally.
I thought that plan went through the Parks Advisory Committee, did it not? Yeah, so it already, it already went through that process, but it might not have been something that they were looking at. The plan for the tennis and pickleball courts went through the Parks Advisory Committee. I mean, it just might not have been something that they thought about.
To me, it sounds like what happened over there wasn't aligned with what the ad hoc committee was discussing.
Right.
I'm just, I'm just trying to think, outdoor sports field, I mean...
The taller the list, you have to use price wise.
What if you just take that whole section out, the outdoor sports field section out, and then it has to come before someone? I'm, I'm just, I mean, realistically, do we ever think that there's gonna be 65 foot poles out here?
Well, here we go, there are 65 foot poles out here.
They might as well forget the softball, because it's either full of water or mud, so they're never gonna like that. But I think there is a big push, and Katie would probably verify this, there's a big push to convert that softball field to a soccer field. Now, whether parents would want their children out there playing games at night or not, I don't know. Maybe. Adam, are you hearing this?
Loud and clear, loud and clear, absolutely.
Do you think there's a lot of people on the island that would want, I, I've heard that people want a soccer court, do you think they'd ever want it lighted?
I think so, I mean, with daylight savings time, I mean, there's, as a parent with three kids, we're always looking for something to do after 5:30, when it's pitch black outside. So if it was an opportunity for us to get them out there and even just go kick a soccer ball or do anything, I think it would be well received. But I totally agree that the 65 foot pole height would be wildly unnecessary for a field like that.
So I looked up the sports field heights, and the average sport field height not, not is 40 to 100 feet. With lower levels using shorter poles of 50 to 70 feet.
So you need more poles for shorter, for shorter poles? You need more poles if you ever...
Right, which is why these 75 and 65 is...
That way over there.
That's exactly what she said, yeah.
I do remember that, yeah. But now I kick myself.
I know, we just, we didn't zero in on that, did we?
Well, we were only in ad hoc committee, we weren't...
But we kind of missed that.
If I was on the Board of Aldermen getting feedback from the community about those lights, I would want to know about our future photometric measurements, if that means...
Because we know the board members have to be getting calls if she's getting calls. No, they all must.
So what type of verbiage can we come up with that? For outdoor sports courts?
Robert, we didn't have a...
I don't think you want to use...
You haven't had anybody.
Nobody's called me, they just called you guys, Robert.
Well, this is one of them, around talking to people, and that's one of the things they've been bringing up, yes.
Gotcha.
And I've had two, two phone calls, and then other ones were just talking to people enough. They brought that issue up.
Just as a side note, you're gonna check on whether the shields are in properly?
Oh, no, I was saying that I was gonna bring it up to Katie and wonder if there could be shields installed to reduce trespass.
Well, you know what the problem that's gonna be, he's gonna pay for it. But I asked him.
What did, what did you say, Jim? Any, any future...
That, that the proposed, yeah, the proposed lighting, which is gonna be the town, is gonna be the applicant, would have to go to the planning board for review and then on to their Alderman. So they don't get complaints about the next time we put lights up for the soccer field, then they'll know about it. And people could come to the hearing and then, you know, okay, y'all said it was okay, so we did it.
What if you, what if you were to put a height restriction less than that 65 feet? A really low height restriction on outdoor sports fields? And then add some language that if the Aldermen want to...
Increase it.
Increase it, then it needs to...
Based on manufacturer's recommendations or whatever. But, yeah, I, I think that height should be 40 feet, I mean, then it's...
I, I want to go back on record, because David said I was saying the wrong thing. The height of lighting poles for local park tennis courts typically range from 20 to 26 feet for recreational play. This height ensures adequate illumination while minimizing glare and light spill. According to the International Tennis Federation, poles should be at least 26 feet tall to provide proper coverage. For more competitive settings such as athletic clubs, heights may extend to 39.
I didn't say that you were, I'm reading the exact same Google that you did too.
No, it's not Google, it's AI.
Yeah, AI overbeats the exact same one. What I'm saying is, is the US, and I believe the USTA has requested to use, and that was one of the reasons why they're putting those lights in on the, on those tennis courts. And USTA is, having played USTA, is a little bit more than just recreation. They're pretty, they're pretty, they're pretty competitive, as you know.
Yep, we're not, we're not using this for USTA right now. We don't have enough tennis courts to do USTA unless we do, unless we do the combo league.
Right.
So that's not even really, it's more recreational for the residents.
It is recreational and, and competitive. So I know 65 is way too high, but I think that if you keep, if you keep them at 40 feet, I think that would encompass competitive place, or I think it says 26 to 39 feet for martial clubs.
Robert, what's the height of the streetlights? Is it 30 feet?
31, not 18.
You know, that's funny, what's that? How high are the streetlights, I'm not sure.
I think that's accurate, I think they're around 30 feet.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense, because they're not quite...
An awful lot of street basketball gets played on the streetlights. So I mean, that's at least some, you know, qualifier for what we should be considering on other fields here. Maybe not a soccer field or something.
Tennis is a little different, because you're hitting the ball a little, a little higher. But no, I agree, I think, hopefully they don't shoot that high.
I play 3.44.
Well, the only thing we're gonna be using the tennis courts for as far as USTA is mixed, mixed. We don't have enough courts to do it for, like, we don't have the court availability to do regular USTA.
I think we all would agree 65 feet's too high.
Yeah, I think we're at that point, yeah.
So we're trying to redraft, draft something for future.
I like, I like to put a height in there.
I mean, so maybe 40 foot ideal max?
How about, how about, no, what I, what I would say is, I mean, shoot, you can put, pole mounted luminaries shall not exceed 30 feet in mounting height, subject to additional approval.
By the Board of Aldermen?
By the Board of Aldermen, by the Board of Alder. And then that, that, is that good? I mean, is 30 too low or is 30 too high?
I think that's, I think that's more reasonable.
At least, at least gives us the chance that if someone wants to put something higher, we can, they can...
If you have 30, they've got other spots, that'd be good.
And all we're worried really about is the town doing it, because there's no other places.
Well, I was gonna ask a question now, and I hate to not know. Well, tennis courts split at Holiday Inn, they are.
And, and so much of the building of Holiday Inn in 2000, you know, was driven by the collaboration of then Carolina Power and Light, the town. And so those lights were meeting a standard, and Tony was part of that. And they were meeting a standard for building of the time. Has anybody talked to Duke Power about what they recommend in terms of the common areas? Because they're the ones that are gonna drive the public...
We only talked to them about parking lots, right?
Yeah, well, we talked to them in general about...
There's the streetlights too, though.
In streetlights, parking lots.
The streetlights, on commercial parking, gas stations, things like that. So...
But the, but even those Holiday Inn ones, I mean, they're only probably, what, 20? The ones that are at the clubs.
The tennis courts?
It is, I mean, there's, there's a lot of them.
Tennis courts, there, there are tennis courts over at Station One as well, but all of those were required to have shades.
Right, the directions, yeah.
There's no, there's no more than 25 feet, probably, but they're...
So we have other courts that have lights. And that would be an interesting set of data points to have as a comparison before we try to just make up a number, doesn't make any sense. If you know streetlights...
We need to study the location.
Knowing that streetlights are 30.
Need to study the location of the park. It's, you know, it's not just that we don't put 20 foot luminaries. You need to study the environment, where it is, what the purpose is.
Then, then let's do this, let's say outdoor sports fields. Those, whoever's, something to the effect of whoever's wishing to put in lights for outdoor sports fields, should provide a photometric plan to Board of Alderman.
Yeah, because if somebody has to replace their, if Station One has to replace their lights, they have lights, right?
Yes, and, and I have a list of questions for Robert and for you all on these things that come from OTO from Lumina and from Shell Island. And they already have the ones from Trailmore, but from Station One. they already have the ones from Trail Horn, but from Station One.
Robert, you wanna take a look at this?
The commercials have questions.
Trespass, even all the way back into the waters.
I'm gonna give them to them, then.
Let me, let, let's, I'm gonna break, we'll have public comment, I just have to come up here and say, back, we're just waiting, so, 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 just, just, so, so, just, wait one second.
When, when, when you're ready.
Let, let Robert finish up, and then we'll, and then you come up and tell us that same comment. So let's, so, again, is everyone in agreement that we say something to the effect of outdoor sports fields, period? Those wishing to install pole-mounted luminaries shall provide a photometric plan to the Board of Alderman?
Do you want it to say Board of Alderman, or do you want it to be presented to the planning board first?
Why wouldn't they go through the planning department and then to the planning board?
To the planning, planning department, then, because I don't, the only, I don't know how, if we can direct, and I guess it's a recommendation, so that's fine, yeah, you can do it, planning department slash board.
What I was, um, what I was thinking, like, listening to you, just for minimal language change, it'd be pole-mounted luminaries should not exceed thirty feet in mounting height. Unless approved by the Board of Alderman.
I, I would rather, because as they were saying, we don't really know if thirty feet is a number.
Yeah, I mean, I would find that number for you before the next meeting. It was just, the thirty was just a placeholder. But I'm just trying to get the language right.
I would, I would almost rather them present a photometric plan with pictures and information regarding the visors, regarding shielding, instead of, this way we know what, what they're doing.
Yeah. They have to go through, through that, right? Yeah, well, typically, yes. So it should be all that correct, yeah?
Okay, what's, what would, how would they, when would they not typically?
Well, I mean, so, for example, when they replaced all of the the lights in the parking deck, uh, or, I mean, not parking deck, I'm sorry. When they replaced all the lights in the parking lot across from Bluewater, they didn't get a zoning permit for that, did they? I don't remember one. Duke Energy just comes in, advises them, looks at our ordinance, and then throws them off.
So I think we need to, we need to have something specific.
We need, there needs to be some sort of review. Well, it's in our ordinance going forward, Duke Energy has to pass through. Well, you would need to expressly say, you need to explicitly say that it requires a zoning permit. And the only thing that is contingent on a zoning permit would be a photometric plan in that situation. I mean, because of Duke Energy, I mean, because the guy, because the consultant, or, so we, we spoke to more than one person from Duke Energy. One was essentially a contractor slash consultant. And he said that when they put in there, he, he said that what they always do is they go in, they look at the town's ordinances, make sure that they're following the ordinance, and then they just put the lights up. So what that means is they're reading the ordinance, but if they read the ordinance and it says that they need a permit, then they would approach us. So we need to say that it requires a permit. That's, because that is actually the part that's not in here yet.
You know, you're good if we just say must require a photometric plan to the planning board? Or you wanna put feet in there?
Well, I think the process is that they have to come to get a permit, and to get a permit, they have to then, you know. Requires a zoning, I mean, if you simply say that it requires a zoning permit, then I would be like, okay, I need to see what your lights are doing. The only way to tell me what your lights are gonna do is photometric. I don't think we wanna clog the end of the pipe. Right. Let it, let it get trashed out, you know, through the process.
All right, so yeah.
Okay.
We're all in agreement that that's.
Yeah.
Adds, adds a requirement to the light.
Yeah, get rid of the sixty-five feet.
Yeah, I would like to make a recommendation to the Board of Alderman, too, which you said we could do, Robert?
Well, yeah, I mean, you're an advisory board, so absolutely.
I mean, about the existing lights.
Sure.
Okay.
Yep. Robert, there are just a couple data points, if you can get them somehow, and that is at least as comprehensive a survey of where there's lighting, other things in, in our town, in our town parks. So it's, you know, Station One or Holiday Inn, et cetera.
See what they have.
I mean, if you look from, I guess there might be one or two other tennis court areas, like the Court Grass, I don't know if they're lighted. But that'd be the one data point. The other would be, if they're lighted, what kind of height that it has, and maybe how many lights they have per court. I don't expect any of them to have more than one, one or two courts at the end of the day, but it just gives us a reference point, or otherwise we're just making, this is our only example, and it's problematic. That's right. Okay, I'll rewrite that section, and I'll send that out to you all before our next discussion.
Thank you.
Sue, you wanna come up?
Sorry.
That's all right.
I'm sorry for interrupting, I'm Sue Bullock, and I'm here with the chamber, and I'm here representing the businesses, of course, on the commercial side, that viewed the changing in the ordinance both positively and, and are not afraid of the uniformity. They just don't know what they have now, and where it fits into what they're going to have to live up to in the future. So when I sent these out as drafts, I asked them to look at their properties and compile a list of questions that Robert and Tony could look at, bring to you, and then determine if there were changes that were going to be needed. And the question, of course, comes up of grandfathering, and we've, Robert has told me, and I understand, there's a three-year lighting window restriction, but all of these buildings were built long before then. And this has been a complaint-driven issue. And so there have been no complaints, or obviously very few complaints, because we haven't seen it come to the Board of Alderman, et cetera. So what we would like you to do is take these questions and do what you're doing, go out to the data points that exist on the island, and see what's out there, because there is a hodgepodge of what's out there. Court Grass was built to different standards than Marshall Dunes, and the whole North End is different than the South End. And so there's a whole lot out there that you may end up tweaking. And from our standpoint, we don't wanna have to get up at the Board of Alderman and then do a recital of these questions. We want them, if they can be, to handle, be handled here in the process before it ever gets there. So that's where we are. I have, I will, I will send you all the copies, I will email them to Robert, and he can send them out, or however they want me to do it. I can send them to you, but you can send them out. Because, and I am here simply as an emissary. I, I control none of it, but it becomes because of our building time and the decades of differences of construction on this beach, we have everything from the forties all the way through whatever, the courts, and the court's the only reason I know of, because I looked at the plan when Katie was doing, bringing the plan around, brought it to the chamber, and brought the lighting issue, and said, they come in standardized poles, the higher you have, the less you have to buy. And the people in planning of that were looking to have the most reasonable cost. Well, the higher lights are more reasonable cost, and that's how we got there. Whether we like it or not is a totally different question. So that's our position, and we'd like to be able to bring that to Robert, and then have you look at it for the next meeting or whatever the process is that you're going through. Thanks.
Thank you, Sue.
All right, so, just, we've talked about, about, yeah, just as a point of reference, we, current ordinance was approved in.
I think it was two thousand twelve.
It was, I think originally adopted in five or six, and then ended in twelve.
And at that time, there was a term, a time limit. It was a three-year sunsetting period there. That was the, yeah, the three-year sunsetting period. Which basically was, you get in line with the new ordinance. Now, admittedly, there was some elements of the new, the revised ordinance at that time that, you know, as we found through the ad hoc work, a little dicey, as, what does this really mean? How, how do you interpret it, certainly now, in this day and age? But, but there's been a lot of time from that point till now for lots of commercial and private entities to go ahead and just do whatever they want. Regardless of the ordinance. Well, I mean, with new construction for the past several years, we have been looking at their lights before we issue a CO as part of the zoning, as part of the final zoning inspection. I go out and I look at the lights and make sure that, you know, they're either shielded or aimed properly, and then, you know, it's just like measuring the setbacks and the driveways. I mean, it's just part of my checklist when I go for inspection. So I'm not going out looking at existing construction. I'm, the, the thing that I'm doing right now is, you know, making sure that everything matches the current ordinance with new construction. And, and I think that, you know, we've been doing that for like the past two to three years. So, you know, before that, it wasn't part of the standard inspection. But, you know, lighting has sort of come to the forefront with, and, and the whole reason why it's come, it's, it's come like it is is because the lights are so much more bright now. They're, with LEDs, they're, they're more white, which is more piercing. And they're brighter with lower energy, so, you know, that's why it's become an issue in recent years, and so we've added it to the zoning inspection. And then it was brought to the Board of Alderman to, to look at ultimately, to address some of the issues. And when it went to the ad hoc committee, we essentially realized that we need, we had a whole lot of redundancy, a whole lot of language that doesn't apply anymore, and a whole lot of ambiguity. So all we've really tried to do between the old ordinance and the new ordinance is modernize the language, make things clearer and better organized, and and then we ended up with a sixty-five foot light pole in the back of our campus.
Well, Robert, to your point, we have not regulated uplighting in the last several years.
No, because, I mean, like I said, it is, I mean, and we talked about this in the ad hoc committee, because it is, it is complaint-driven. The, you know, no one who, who does that job is here at, when the sun goes down, or when, when those lights come on. Unless we get a complaint, and then I stay, and then I go and take pictures, document, and then write a letter of violation.
And we, we talked about this in the ad hoc committee, it pits neighbor against neighbor. And it, it's not a good solution. And I'm not faulting you, it's just the way the system is, and somehow we need to figure out.
It's almost like the town's working against itself with those. You're trying to put a lighting ordinance on commercial and residential, and you have a lighting extrapolation right in the middle of your municipal complex. It's kind of, you know what I mean, it's like you're telling people.
Not pointing fingers at anybody on staff, I mean.
No, 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 I'm not pointing at you, I'm just saying, no, not you, I'm not the town. The town itself, it's sort of like, it feels a little hypocritical to approve something like that in town.
Well, uplighting is currently not against the ordinance. However, every oak tree along Salisbury and Causeway has a light pointing up into the canopy. But in our current ordinance, the town exempts itself from that.
Yeah, and we talked about that in ad hoc, you know, we're the first ones that need to fix ourselves. I mean, the municipal sign art here has uplighting on it, and not supposed to be, but.
It's, it's a question also that is raised to you, the precedent that's been set now with those courts. And the fact that if someone in one of the units that has different heights goes to court and says, that's the precedent, and you allowed it to stand, then you're into a whole different confrontation over lighting and what the ordinance means. And so it's why the businesses would like to discuss that upfront, rather than in a courtroom where the stakes and the costs get a lot higher.
That's, that's right, all this, correct, I mean, every little piece of it, but you let her do it, you let her do it.
And we have, yeah, we have fifty years of different lettings.
All right, so, I think we've addressed the sports fields unless we have any more discussion. So, speaking about the rest of the lighting work, do you have any issues or any discussion that we wanna talk about? Other parts of the lighting work, other crucial? Neil?
I've got a couple minutes, sorry.
Jim?
No, I didn't have anything else.
So I will re-massage this, give you a second, no problem. And this is, I mean, literally, this is the input that I needed, you know, because we, we had the ad hoc committee for a year and a half roughly, and, you know, we spoke to, we spoke to consultants and contractors and got information. We, we used other municipalities along the coast to see what they did versus like what we currently do. And then we came back to it with the idea of an ordinance that we attempted to rewrite. Then we send it out, everybody reads it and looks at it and says, we need to change, you know, this list of things. So now what I have is, you're the next step, so we, we get to change it more, that's just the process. You know, so we'll, out of the ad hoc committee comes the, the structure, I mean, or the, the theory, you know, the theory, ultimate theories. And then we come to the planning board and you guys refine it. And then we take it to the Board of Alderman, and they either say we love it or we hate it. They send it back to the planning board with this in mind, and then we talk about it again. I mean, that's just the process, it's not, it's definitely.
So how many questions are you, how many, realistically, how many questions do you think you're gonna have that you're gonna send us?
There are probably ten or twelve questions that are common to the.
The reason why I say that is.
And, and it's, the one, of course, is from Lumina, one of them is, well, our, we're, in reading this, some of our lights don't meet the standard, and we know we're three years past, but we believe that we're grandfathering. Well, we know that's not the way we're applying it, so we have that. And then we have others in terms of what happens when you have a masthead light, what happens when you have other things. And most of it is workable, but.
That's fine, I, I just wanted to know, because the intent was to do, commercial, September, discussion. Text amendment, October. Residential, November. Text amendment, December. But if we have a lot of questions that are gonna come from businesses, it may make more sense to get all those questions and have another discussion in October, instead of have him do a text amendment without input on those discussions.
Yeah, and I can rewrite this, I mean, because this is what I did with the ad hoc committee, is every time the ad hoc committee would come together, and we would have new ideas and new, you know, new perspectives and approaches and everything, I would rewrite it and then send it back out. And so we, we slowly chiseled away at.
We just read a fast time, fast timeline, especially with the discussion today, especially with additional things.
Yeah, so I mean, again, with all of the input that I've received today, I will rewrite this and send it back with all the ideas and the questions in mind, and the suggestions for the, the height and how to, how to address that. So that's, that's no problem from, from us, I mean, from staff.
And just, also just to touch base with Katie, to see what her, but I really do think it was the, what you said, that the height made less cheaper.
Oh, I definitely think, I mean, with more, and the light spreads out, I mean, it's less holes.
One other question I had, if I may, for Robert. Could you, in the future submittals, attach the need and purpose statement to each one? I think it's important that everybody re-review that. We really worked hard on it, and our intent was to make it not adversarial. In other words, we wanna create a nice atmosphere in the town, we don't wanna make it adversarial for the commercial. We not, understand commercial needs, particular, particular lighting, especially the little restaurants and stuff. I was down at South Beach Grill the other night, they've got the bulb lights, and I'm thinking, and so does Pose, and I'm thinking, like, South Beach Grill, I mean, it's very nice atmosphere, and it doesn't bother anybody. And I'm thinking, and so does Pose, and I'm thinking, like, South Beach Grill, I mean, it's very nice atmosphere, and it doesn't bother anybody.
Well, Pose has shields on them.
Yeah.
Well, John doesn't have any.
On their, on their.
Their string Edison lights, they all have, um, same thing with between, uh, Tower Seven. Tower Seven.
Do they have shields on those?
Yeah, their Edison bolts also have little plastic cones over them.
But anyway, we, we wanted that purpose, uh, need and purpose statement, and we plagiarized it, we got it from, uh, Kenny Bugport, Maine.
Still we?
Believe it or not, um, but we wanted to make it soft and, and, you know, easy for the Alderman to swallow, really, that, you know, why are we doing this lighting ordinance, and we're not trying to be like hardass as a motto, we're just wanting to make a better quality of life.
Well, we improved upon the previous ordinance statement, so.
Right, right.
I did have a question I know here, um, so it's, uh, I think it was on the first page of the, the, uh, red line, et cetera.
Okay.
Item E.
Yes.
Landscaping and decorative lighting. That's all it's there, I don't understand what, if there's something missing.
Oh, I'm saying.
The, the, so it's A, large A, then put it on until you get to subset.
I think it's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He just marks that out, the next set, the next F says landscape or decorative features, maybe?
Yeah, that's what it should have been, that should have been a cross-through, and the underline is, is F, that, that was a formatting issue, because I was, I got a new computer when I sent this up, and I was having issues like formatting this work.
Now, you can only use that access for sixty days.
I know, I'm running out of time. Sorry about that. Yeah, I'll just, I'll make sure that that's, that's, um, out on the next one, because we just re, we re, uh, landscaper and decorative lighting to landscaping and decorative fixtures, yeah, that's what it was. Which includes the carriage lights, I believe, that's why we changed that, it's just a, just a change of language that we do as the kitty bits.
Yep.
The branches, luminaires.
Brunches, we play them, we like them, you know?
Um, so is there anything else I should address in this? I'll see my way, don't forget unless you have other questions.
Is there anything else? So everyone agree that we're gonna get some questions from the businesses? So who's gonna send those to Robert, Robert will send those out, can send those out maybe a little bit before, get the package, get us, so we all have the opportunity to talk to people and think about it. And then have another discussion at the October meeting on commercial?
A second.
With some clarification on heights and stuff like that.
What's existing.
So before doing anything, like, we need a little bit more.
Yeah, before we get a text amendment together, let's at least get what some of these other lights are.
One more discussion.
Yeah, maybe why, if you can find, if you can find out about, why they're sixty-five feet, I'm sure they're gonna tell you that it's because.
It was a cost issue.
It's a cost issue.
Right.
Okay, first, first day, so.
So just have that, so this way we'll have all that stuff, but we can have another discussion.
I don't know how you can, can measure, uh, the lateral light coming off those that the neighborhood is seeing, but you can at least measure what's hitting the ground as far as, uh.
Right.
And get shields on them.
I just, I just don't know, shields will.
Make any difference.
Yeah. Maybe, maybe we're, maybe they will.
Consultant sheet, I mean.
I mean, you could, maybe, you know, I mean, you could conceivably, you know, if you put shields on the sides, maybe eliminate, you know, start eliminating in, you know, and I don't.
Well, and Robert, you can check, Robert, you can check and see if they're violating the trespass, the light trespass law, I mean, ordinance.
Right, yeah, I would, I would expect that he has to, the engineers had to do some sort of calculation.
Yes, you should.
I'd like to see that calculation, yeah.
So, that's what's gonna happen, uh, that's what the plan is for next meeting, everyone agree with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
And then we'll just bump it one week, uh, one month down. So November will be potentially, unless we have a little bunch more questions, approving a commercial text amendment, sending to the register, uh, to the register.
Register date.
To the board of Alderman, that's what I've done, I'll bet. Um, and then, and then we'll just, December will be, let's start talking about residential. My guess is we're probably gonna have some similar questions, so there's been one or two meetings to discuss, with the intent of maybe February-ish, March-ish.
I think the good news is with residential, that is the least changed section in the entire ordinance.
Yeah, and I think that's why we did, the order that we're doing.
And didn't we have in our minutes that we were going to at some point address the turtle lighting ordinance, which has never started?
That was gonna be, yeah, y'all, I think when we talked about it, we specifically exempted the turtle talk to get through commercial, peers, residential.
Right, because the.
And then have a turtle talk.
The lighting, the lighting currently with concerning turtles is, is basically unaffected by this, because the turtles section is, is kind of after, if I'm not mistaken, I'm like.
It's already there, right?
Yeah, I think it's already there, um.
But we were gonna work on it, we have, we have not, no one's.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, which is why we were not working on it immediately.
We have not, yeah, we have not talked anything about turtles in the last year.
And ad hoc didn't do any.
Yeah, the intent was to do that after we got this whole, this stuff together, and then we'll talk about it.
Correct.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure that we were going to eventually.
Well, that, I think that's ad hoc, is gonna have to have that discussion before comes, before us, right, wasn't that the?
It doesn't, I mean, it doesn't necessarily, not, you know, I mean.
Well, we're gonna need, we're gonna.
That's up to the Board of Alderman, not everything has to.
Well.
No, I understand, but we're gonna need, if we're gonna do it, we're gonna need someone that knows something about.
David is correct, I remember when we adjourned, uh, Zeke was going to reconvene us.
Yes.
At the proper time, so.
To do that.
Should, who should get with Zeke to put that back on?
Just that, well, I mean, we're still.
I'll let her email it.
Yeah, but you can, you know, we're, we're realistically March or April before we approve this, so.
It'll take us till March.
Yeah, so you can let her know, springtime might be a good, I mean, it's a good time to talk about the turtles anyway, because that's when.
Yeah.
I mean, we missed that turtle season, the next turtle season.
What?
It means we missed the next turtle season.
I don't think we live much faster, do you?
Well, I don't know, when, when does turtle season start?
We start walking around in April.
April, we should be able to get, talk about that, well. Yeah, we can be working on it.
Well, yeah, ad hoc, ad hoc can start meeting together, let's, let's get through commercial, get to residential, and then maybe y'all can get the ad hoc back together and have some experts come about.
You're good with that, should, go ahead and get the ad hoc going, I think we should.
That's perfect. I mean, are y'all good, I mean, you're on, you're on the committee, so are y'all good with it?
And, uh, John Wessel, I've seen John still, let's come back on board.
Yeah, hopefully.
Yeah.
My dad, replacement, I think he was fed up.
Oh, no. He's had a chance to rest, give me a.
Yeah.
Alright, so that's wrapping up new business, everyone, or unless anyone else has any more questions, discussion, well, lighting, commercial, good, talk next time. Um, old business, anyone?
No.
Other business, y'all, Neil?
No.
No.
Wow. Um, I take it Tony and Robert are good and ready to go? Most of you adjourned, anyone?
I move we, Jared.
In a second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Let's do it.